Twenty twenty-four, six oh one P. M. I'm gonna go out to item two, roll call. City Secretary.
Mayor Hoven.
Presente.
Mayor Protem Swanner.
Present.
Mayor Protem Mata.
Present.
Councilmember Thompson.
Present.
Councilmember Vazquez.
Maybe different here.
Councilmember Cornell.
Present.
Councilmember Haney is absent. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Item four, we'll be doing the pledge of allegiance, the Texas pledge, and will be led by Councilmember Mata, and then after that, we'll wind up doing proclamations, presentations, awarding. Oh, I'm sorry, I was jumping over. Item three invocation will be given by Pastor Donald Bug of Crossroads Church. Pastor. Church is your, the floor is yours. Anyone wish, willing to, wishing to join us for a moment, can do so by standing up.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. Father, we come before you now. God, we thank you for this opportunity together, together as part of this city. None of us would be here tonight if we didn't love this wonderful city that you've placed us in. God, we thank you for the many ways that you've blessed Odessa, ways that you haven't blessed other communities. God, we just give you the glory for that. I thank you for our mayor and the city leadership that's here tonight. I ask that you would grant them wisdom as they do their best to deliberate choices for the better of our city and its future. I ask also your blessing for each of the people from our community that are out. I pray there are protection, your provision for them and each of the families they represent. So, God, again, we just give you all the events of this evening. Lord, we pray that everything that's done, everything that's said, would bring you honor and glory. And we just give you all the praise in your son's holy name. Amen.
Amen. Do I mean the pledges?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Counsel, before we do the proclamation, presentations, and awards, I'd like the counsel to consider to suspend the rules and have a motion and a second. Have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Cornell. All in favor indicating by saying aye. All those, all those opposed indicating same sign. Motion passed unanimously. Rules are suspended. We're gonna move into, we have a presentation?
Yes.
City Secretary.
Chris Crow, could you come to the podium, please?
Honorable Mayor, distinguished counsel, thank you so much for being here tonight, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Got a little bit of a momentous occasion and somebody I wanted to kind of recognize. I know we are a nonpartisan council, but still, we're a very conservative city of Odessa. And you guys know me, I'm a right-wing nutjob Republican conservative. And so, after our last primary election, going back through the numbers, we noticed that at this point, for the first time in a long time, the Odessa City Council is now one hundred percent Republican. So, I had a little presentation. Councilman Vazquez, thank you so much for seeing the light. Welcome to the, to the Republican side of the table. And I can't think of anything more Republican and conservative than Mike Huckabee's book, God, Guns, Grits, and Glory. So, what.
Did you autograph it?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
From Arkansas.
City Secretary.
That's all.
Okay, so, go ahead. Before we go on to citizen comments on agenda items and the consent agenda, since we suspended the rules, counsel, will you go over to resolutions? And we're gonna go to item eight. Consider the acceptance of future development park site in the Desert Ridge subdivision as recommended by Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Councilmember Swanner?
Yes, this was on our council work session last week, and I am proud to say and honored to say if we pass this tonight, that we are finally gonna accept the future development park that is developed. We are currently still waiting on grass. And the family is here, and I would like to recognize Larry Lee and his entire family and present them with the plaque.
Do we need to take the vote first?
Please take the vote first.
This is a considered recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to accept a developed three-point-eight-five acre neighborhood park in Desert Ridge subdivision, developed by Lico Properties and the Odessa Parks Foundation along with the commitment of future maintenance on behalf of the city. Counsel, I will open up for any questions or any statements. The floor is yours. If not, I'll recommendation for a motion and a second for approval on item eight as presented. So, move. I have a motion. Second. I have a second. All in favor indicating by saying aye. All opposed indicating same sign. Motion passed unanimously.
Okay.
This has been a working progress, and I want to thank Larry Lee and his entire family. We have probably been working on this project for two years now, maybe a little longer. It's been a long time coming. And Mr. Lee, would you and your entire family come up and do the honors of accepting this plaque in honor of your late mother? And I believe your father is here. And so, if the family would come up here, I want to recognize y'all. And the plaque says, "In grateful recognition of Lico Properties for the generous donation of Park Land honoring Peggy Grace Lee, that will benefit and enrich our community with sincere appreciation, the city of Odessa."
My blessings to have us daddy.
Come on, Larry. Would you let me give this to your father?
Yes.
Here. We want you to come on over here. We're gonna say, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
And we want to present you with this plaque in honor of your wife, your late wife.
Thank you so much. It's wonderful. I don't know what to say. But thank you. Thank you a lot. The whole family, they appreciate it. They appreciate y'all.
We appreciate you and your family. And give me a smile, and then I'll have a family picture.
That's it.
Hey, let's see if I can get everyone happy. And then, why don't you get out while you do the family? All right, everyone, look here. One, two, three. Can you get on one more? Thank you.
We're gonna go back. Any citizen comments on on agenda items, can do so by coming forward, filling out a card. And I will remind the city council that we cannot respond by direct staff and anybody's request. These items are considered to be routine, have been previously discussed. This is the consent agenda. Any member of the public may address the city council regarding any of its agenda items before or during consideration of item. Counsel will overlook the consent agenda and consider a motion for approval in a second. So, moved. I have motion for approval by Councilmember Mata. Do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Swanner. All in favor indicating by saying aye. All those opposed indicating same sign. Motion passed unanimously. We're gonna move on back to resolutions. Item five, consider an agreement between the Odessa Development Corporation and the University of Texas Permian Basin. This agreement between the ODC and UTPB for a workforce analytics project in amount of three-hundred-ninety-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars for the first year and four-hundred-and-twenty-thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-one for the second year. Mr. Crow, did you leave? There we go. You moved.
And you'll have to turn that around, I apologize.
Can everybody hear us in the back? Thank you, sir.
All right. Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you so much. So, you are correct, Mr. Mayor. I'm here today to present an agreement between the Odessa Development Corporation and the University of Texas, the Permian Basin. In summary, the University of Texas, the Permian Basin, has submitted a proposal for a collaboration with the Permian Strategic Partnership, the Midland Development Corporation, and the ODC to develop an SAS Analytics Workforce Model that will support plans to close the workforce gaps and to provide support for economic development. Recent economic reports show that over the next twenty years, this region will require an additional one-hundred-and-ninety-thousand workers, including thirty-eight-thousand bachelor degrees. This initiative will provide ongoing statistical analysis that identify the specific gaps, support planning efforts to close those gaps, and tracks the progress for economic, educational, and business leaders. The total cost for year one will be nine-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars. The ODC's portion will be three-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand, two-seventy-nine. The total project cost for year two will be nine-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars. And of that, the ODC will be four-hundred-and-twenty-thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars. The ODC Board of Directors has determined that a valid economic development need and purpose will be served by its participation in this project, and this is an eligible cost as defined by section five-oh-four dot one-oh-two of the Texas Local Government Code. The ODC has approved this agreement during its May sixteenth regular meeting, and we ask for your approval as well.
Counsel, any questions? Any comments?
Just curious exactly how, this is for a study, correct?
Yes, so the SAS Analytical Group has apparently an advanced software program that tracks not only what the needs are in our area for upcoming bachelor's degrees, and it allows UTPB and ECISD, even all the way down to the grade school level, to start their education process to prepare those students to go into those actual industries and prepares them to go into those degree plans.
So, this is just a study?
It's, it's, it's an ongoing study. Sure, yeah, it's an ongoing study that, where they're gathering the information, I guess, and I don't know if it's, a lot of it's through polling, to where they're polling students into what degree fields they would like to go into. In addition to the companies that are in our area, that are, that are telling us, you know, what type of employees, what educational backgrounds, what kind of knowledge they're, they're gonna need to fill their future employment gaps. And so, it's a joint effort between the employer, the employers in the area and our educational facilities to try to meet those needs in the future years coming up.
Mr. Crow, if I remember right from y'all's meeting.
Please.
It's also a software development plan with the study.
Correct.
It's not just a study, it's, it's the analytics behind it, more than the study itself.
And UTPB will be the caregiver of all of the information that comes out of these studies. And this information will be made available to basically everybody in the Permian Basin to help grow our economic base.
Just a quick bit of background. So, the ODC Board and Dr. Woodley and staff, y'all have been meeting.
Yes, sir.
To come to this agreement?
Yes, sir. And again, it's a mutual agreement. It's being funded by the ODC, the MDC, and the Permian Strategic Partnership.
Oh, Permian Strategic Partnership.
PSP's involved. So, it's all equal shares?
Not quite. PSP isn't quite equal. PSP is doing, I believe, a hundred thousand dollars a year, and then the rest, the remainder is split between ODC and MDC.
Which is how much?
For, for the, for year one, it's three-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand, two-seventy-nine. Will be split, we'll, we'll do three, three-ninety-eight, two-seventy-nine, so will MDC.
That's what I want.
And then for year two, it'll be four-hundred-and-twenty-thousand, seven-eighty-one for each of us.
So, PSP's just kicking in a hundred, okay?
A hundred thousand each year, yes, sir.
And I, was the vote seven-doh unanimously?
Yes, yes, it was unanimous vote with our ODC Board.
Good.
Great questions.
The plan, actually, once all the information is gathered and collected and sorted out, it will offer remedies and action plans to make.
That's the plan, yes, sir. Yes, sir. The main thing is to find out what future needs we're gonna have for our workforce, and then have a plan to supply that workforce based on the educational needs that the companies are gonna need.
Counsel, any further questions, comments? entertain a motion for approval or not approval on item, no, item five?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Councilmember Swanner. Do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Mata. All in favor indicating by saying aye. All opposed indicating same sign. Motion passed unanimously. Item six, consider economic development performance agreement between the Odessa Development Corporation or Orex Plastic Company. Mr. Crow?
Thank you. So, yes, Orex Plastic Company is a plastic manufacturing firm that specializes in complex compounds of plastics. Orex will make a capital investment of approximately two-point-five million dollars for the expansion of their existing manufacturing facility in Hector County, and will create and maintain sixteen full-time or full-time equivalent employment positions with a minimum annual payroll of six-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars during the term of the agreement. Based on the value of the qualified expenses in full-time or full-time equivalent employment positions, Orex has been approved for financial assistance from the Odessa Development Corporation in the amount of two-point-one million dollars on a reimbursement basis to be paid out over five years once compliance has been verified by ODC as provided in the performance agreement. The ODC did approve this performance agreement during its June thirteenth regular meeting, and we again ask for your approval.
Counsel, any questions, comments?
Remind me who is the owner of Orex Plastic?
Nick Fowler owns Orex, is Roy's Rex-Tac, and there's a third. Which one am I forgetting? Orex Rex-Tac and, what's the third company? I was thinking there was a third, like Orion or something like that. Anyway.
Orion, yeah.
Yeah, but Nick's just been a fabulous member of our community, has done so much. If you guys have never had the, the opportunity, Nick was nice enough to invite us out for a tour of the facility. It is absolutely amazing. And to see what their plastics and their plastic compounds go into worldwide is truly amazing, to know that all of that stuff comes out of, right here out of Odessa, Texas. But he is a true asset for our community, so we're, the board was, was very grateful to be able to do this.
Back to petroleum again.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna be abstaining from this. I have a first cousin that's in upper management for Orex, so.
Okay. So, there's no, I know in the past, we've heard you guys talk about asking companies to make sure there's no upward movement of somebody down here and up here to cover these sixteen new jobs. In other words, you had a part-time person or a.
Correct, yeah, and all of these are truly for Orex, and they are.
I know it's been a conversation you've had in the past.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And it's a, it's fantastic. We were very, very pleased, would like to see more of these. And it's, and it's a great diversification. The plastics they do actually go into things more specifically. For example, Nick gave a great presentation. The vast majority of diapers that are made on this planet have the plastic compounds that come right out of Orex facilities. The food containers, like used for deli meats, for example, the plastic covers that seal those, the, the compounds that come out of this facility are what actually make the glue that holds those layers and stuff together. Very, very interesting.
Who'd have thought?
Yeah. If you ever have an opportunity, can talk Nick into showing you around, it's extremely impressive.
Anyway, back to petroleum again.
Yep.
Gotta dance with the wonder brung ya.
Yes, sir. We've always been and always will be an old community, but that doesn't mean we can't try like the dickens.
Have you finally?
Well, it's, it's one of those things that, we're, we are gonna continue to fund what's gonna create jobs and what's gonna create capital investment, but it's not gonna keep us from still hunting diversification, so that, all of us have been here in West Texas long enough to know that it's not, if, it's more like when we're gonna go through another downturn. And if we've got companies out here that can employ our folks, that won't be susceptible to that, that's obviously still a goal. But we're still gonna do what it takes to create jobs, create capital investments, we can perpetuate economic growth for our city.
This is a good one. Counsel, do we have any other questions or comments? Now entertain a motion to approve item six as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Swanner, second by Councilmember Cornell. All in favor indicating by saying aye. All opposed indicating same sign. Motion passed unanimously. Mr. Crow, thank you very much. Have a great day. We're gonna move on to item seven. Consider authorizing the City of Odessa Police Department to apply and accept amending the fiscal budget to appropriate awarded funds and additional revenue and authorize an expenditure of awarded grant funds in amount of ten thousand dollars from Walmart. Chief?
Mayor, counsel, good evening. This is simply a request to allow us to apply for and receive any funds that we receive from the, a grant from Walmart, their Community Outreach Division. And we're applying for ten thousand dollars. We don't know what we'll receive, if anything. But generally, in the last few years, we've, we've applied and have received funds from this grant program, and those funds have gone to pay for our block, our annual block party. Our block party this year is August third at Sherwood Park from ten to two. That's a shameless plug, so anybody that wants to come out.
If you can't plug it here, we're king.
Counsel, any questions, any comments? Is this money coming or not outwards?
Yes, sir.
Entertain a motion to accept. I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson, second by Councilmember Vazquez. All those in favor indicating by saying aye. All those negative, same sign. I don't know why I said that. I don't know why I said negative. Thank you, chief, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ordinance says item nine, consider the sale conveyance of the old fire station number six to Megan Prado and Andrew Prado, Town and Country Drug. Ordinance first approval.
Mayor, counsel.
You lost your voice.
I know, I'm, I'm like, I'm like, okay, I'm gonna keep it short and sweet. We all, we've been down this road about a million times, and so, all I need is simply a motion to approve this, and we'll put it on consent agenda, Lord willing, two weeks from now.
So moved.
And get this baby done.
Mr. Mayor, since this area falls in District Three, make the motion that we approve?
I have a motion for item nine by Councilmember Vazquez. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Swanner. All those in favor indicating by saying aye. All those opposed indicating same sign. Motion passed unanimously.
And pray there ain't no more ancestors that come out of the woods.
No more heirs that popped up?
No more heirs that pop up, Lord willing.
No more surprises.
Okay, item eight miscellaneous, City Secretary?
We have none.
Okay, seeing that there is. That I didn't see. I didn't go down, down ballot.
We suspended the rules, can we go and do twelve, thirteen, fourteen?
You have to check your session first.
We have, the items below have to discuss.
Yes, sir. We need to go number eleven first, and then we'll come out.
Yeah.
And then y'all will take action on twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. Your votes.
Item eleven, executive session. It's authorized by the Texas Government Code, section, section, section five-five-one point zero-eight-nine. Deliberation regarding security devices or security audits. City council may adjourn to the executive session deliberate one, security assessments or deployments relating to information, resources, and technology. Network security information described in section two-zero-five-nine point zero-five-five B or three deployment of specific occasions for implementation of security personnel, critical infrastructure, or security devices. Counsel, do I entertain a motion to go into executive session? I have a motion by Councilmember Cornell, do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Mata. All in favor indicating by saying aye. All opposed indicating same sign. Motion passed unanimously. We're in the executive session, we will be back.